So we're going to go right into the spotlight. So great to see all of you students and parents. And Andy Ewald, our director of athletics activities is going to lead our spotlight presentation tonight. Thank you so much. Appreciate you all. And again, students and parents, thank you for being here. And I am sorry we are in this room today.
Thank you for having me, school board. I'm Andy Ewald. I'm the district's athletic director. I apologize upfront for my voice. I feel great, but I'm losing my voice for some reason. We're going to start with Cecilia Schmelzy. She is a junior. Doug and Diane, our two Nordic ski coaches, couldn't be here tonight, so that's why I'm here talking. She was the only skier, boy or girl, that qualified from the section ski meet this year onto state from St. Louis Park, which is a huge honor. Much like a lot of our other sports, section six for skiing is probably one of the toughest, if not the toughest, section in the state. It's like a mini-state meet in upon itself. So as a junior, she qualified. She advanced on to the state meet. At the state meet, she finished 32nd. She's been a skier on the team for the last three years. And she's been recognized and will be a captain next year for the Nordic ski team. So first, I'd like to have Cecilia come on up. And I know her mom is here. Her father Ted's not here. But if mom can stand up and just be recognized for all your support and energy and effort with her as well. Alrighty, and Amanda Forsberg, who is our head boy swim coach and also teaches math, is not able to be here tonight, so I'll do the best I can with swimming as well. We're going to start with junior Luke Anderson. He placed 20th in the 100-yard backstroke at the state meet. So if you want to come on up, Luke. Is Alec here, Pittman? Nope. Okay, so Alec Pittman's a senior. He's not able to be here tonight, but he placed 10th in the 500-yard freestyle, also breaking school record in the process at the state meet. So Alec Pittman. And then, we had a relay that swam at the state meet. It was made up of sophomore Will Schweetering. Will, if you want to come up. Hayden Jong, who's here. And senior David Salamzada, who's here as well. They qualified for the finals in the 200-yard melody at the state meet. So this is this relay. Congratulations. You're great. And then lastly, Hayden, who is just a freshman, placed first in the 100-yard breaststroke. So he was a state champion. In double A swimming, which is a huge accomplishment, he broke his own school record in the process. He also placed third in the 200-yard IM, breaking his own school record. And again, he's just a ninth grader. He was also named the outstanding swimmer for the section six double A meet and was nominated for the outstanding swimmer at the state meet as well. So they're all great students. They're all great kids. A lot of youth still here, other than David. So the future's bright for St. Louis Park Swimming, and they've just done a great job. And if your parents can stand up and just be recognized for all your efforts and energy Thank you. Any questions? Karen?
We are really excited about this. We're proud of you all, and thank you for representing St. Louis Park so well. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yep. Great job. Do you want me to let them know they don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting? We're all free to go.
Thanks again for coming. We appreciate it.
All right, Schweetering, won't do that.
Represent girl power.
We're going to be on.
No, you don't have to. We will.
I'm surprised.
I do that great.
Here I go.
Don't please don't look. I don't have a picture yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to call our meeting to order and review the agenda and approve it. On our agenda tonight, we did have the spotlight. The agenda includes the superintendent's report. Our discussion items include the quarterly budget presentation, the American Indian Resolution Committee update, policy development first readings, policy 203.5, school board meeting agenda, 203.6 consent agenda, 205 open and closed meetings, 206 public participation in meetings, 208 development, adoption and implementation of policies, 209.1, school board email, 210 conflict of interest, 214 out-of-state board travel, 215 board compensation, and 225 board operational goals. Policy development second reading of policies 201, legal status of the board, 202, school board officers, 203, operations of the board, 203.1, board procedures, and 203.2, order of the meeting. We have an action agenda to approve policies 201, legal status of the board, 202, school board officers, 203, operations of the board, 203.1, board procedures, and 203.2, order of the meeting. We'll have communications and transmittals, and then adjournment. Is there a motion to approve this agenda? Moved by Mary Tombeck. Is there a second? Second by Ken Morrison. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? No opposed? That carries 6-0. We're on to the superintendent's report. Thank you Superintendent Osai.
All right. Good evening, Chair Waters, members of the board. This evening for my report, I would like to start off by sharing a civil rights research experience which our students participated in last week. Dr. Leanne Stevens and Mr. Matt Harrell, equity coaches at the high school, chaperoned six students from the St. Louis Parks Senior High School on the civil rights research experience. The theme of this year's experience was "I am the dream of my ancestors." The first stop for the students on the research experience was the Civil Rights Museum, formerly the Lorraine Motel in Memphis. The students had an opportunity to visit the Civil Rights Museum on the 50th anniversary of Dr. King's assassination. Other places that students visited on the research experience were the Historic 16th Street Baptist Church, the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, the Edmund Pettit's Bridge, the Slavery and Civil War Museum, and Tuskegee University. Our students were joined on this trip with students from Minneapolis, Robbinsdale, Wayzetta, St. Anthony, New Brighton. And in the month of May, our students will be presenting to the board regarding their experience on the civil rights research experience. Last week, Friday, seventh and eighth graders from Ms. Rosen's Global Classroom elective course debated world issues with fellow delegates at the YMCA's Model United Nations State Conference. Some of the topics discussed at the conference were surveillance and the right to privacy, internally displaced people, genetically modified organisms, and international trade, access to safe water and sanitation, legal documentation for LGBTQ persons, and global development and climate change. Through this UN, through this Model UN experience, our students had an opportunity to work on their public speaking, negotiation skills, writing skills, and learned about diplomacy and international relationships. We will be holding public meetings on April 16th and 18th for the community to get a first look at facility improvements that will occur over the next several years. These meetings will occur on Monday, April 16th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the middle school and the media center, on Wednesday, April 18th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. in the high school cafeteria. Myself, our facilities manager, Tom Bravo, and several architects from different firms that are supporting us through this process will be on hand to give a short presentation and answer questions and gather feedback of those in attendance. Lastly, I would just like to mention an upcoming career expo on April 25th. The St. Louis Park College and Career Readiness Board will be hosting its annual career expo. This is a highly interactive event designed to provide high school students with an opportunity to connect with business and industry. This event provides information and experiences to our students so that they can better understand educational and employment opportunities in our region. So if this is something that you're interested in participating in, please visit our high school website, and there's an opportunity to sign up there. And this concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is the quarterly budget presentation by Director Business Services,
I know it's a little hard to see, a little blurry in some spots, but we'll go through it as well as we can in detail. This is a quarterly report that we do periodically throughout the year to kind of give an idea of where we are with our spending compared to the prior year. So what we do on a quarterly basis, starting in December, is usually a good time to do it since our audit is over with and our budget amendments have been determined, to kind of take a look at the trends. Of course, this is just a tool that we use. It's not going to be an absolute, but at least it gives us, gives us an idea of where we are with our trend compared to the prior year. And looking at this, there's a lot of, there's a few unknowns yet. The teacher, even though the teacher negotiations has been completed, the retro is not included in December, so when our next quarter is presented, we'll be able to show the absolute of what that would be. But looking at the overall picture, looking at the bottom line, I always go to that bottom line because there's always going to be that give and take between the different programs. But even when you look at the programs, it looks pretty good, even if we were to factor in the retro pay, an estimate of what that retro pay is going to be. Looking at that bottom line, I do anticipate that we're going to be very close again this year with our expenditures, as we have been in the past few years. So I do anticipate that we're going to be really close. I'm anticipating that we won't overspend. I know we've been looking very carefully at the site and buildings because there was that overspending last year, but as you can see, they're actually lower than last year, which the anticipation is that they won't be in that overspending, in that area. So I think, from what I see at this point, I see this as being very close again to what our expenditure budgets will be, and we'll give you another presentation come in March. Are there any questions?
Can you just explain more about, I mean, you mentioned, what does the American Indian come on with this budget here?
Yeah, retro pay is something that, we negotiate contracts, and it may not have been negotiated in the time period in which the contract ended. So we back pay.
All right. Thank you so much, Sandy.
Thanks.
The next item is our American Indian Resolution Committee update with Frida Bailey and Shanita
Good evening. My name is Frida Bailey, principal of special assignment, and I have the pleasure of working with our liaison, Native American liaison, and that's Shanita Young. We'll share a little bit about our American Indian education plan, and if you have questions at the end, feel free, and we will answer accordingly. So what we've done in St. Louis Park basically is tried to be really strategic in making sure that when we have conversations with our families, is to share with them how the work that we're doing is connected to the St. Louis Park strategic plan. And we also make sure that we're also giving that alignment to helping them understand what our mission is, which is dealing with the caring, diverse community, and how we're making sure that all students are being able to achieve at their highest level. The other component that we make sure that we're sharing with our families is to let them understand about the strategic plan and the core values and the connection between the intrinsic value. And we really need their input as we continue to move forward, not only in the American Indian plan, but also the connection, once again, to the strategic plan and our mission in St. Louis Park. The American Indian education aid that we receive is based upon some criteria that we usually apply for. It's a grant. And part of the grant is making sure that we're following the guidelines based upon the Department of Ed and the Indian Education Tribal Contract. And with that, we have to make sure that not only are we following what is expected with the Bureau of Indian Education, but also making sure that we're keeping track of the students and making sure that they are receiving what is necessary to, once again, academic increasement, looking at dropout rate to improve the school climate for American Indian students, and help them understand that they too have a voice in the work that we're doing, especially the families. And we want to make sure that there's some cultural appropriate manner in which we're doing that. So one of the things that we've been trying to do, because it's been a moving target for us, and I think part of that has been with the state and federal guidelines as far as identification. And one of the things that Shanita has been really helpful in, and that has been to help us identify, meaning St. Louis Park, identify who are actually our American Indian students. Because on the state form, you have your American Indian, and then the students or families can also choose one or more. And so sometimes, we can have a student that's identified as Hispanic or Black, but the one or more could be also American Indian. So we've been looking at those numbers, trying to work with Prachi and Tom and Teresa to also help us unearth some of the pieces to identify students, because we want to make sure that they're receiving the voice and what's being done as we continue to move forward, and then also make sure that we're getting the families' input as we work on the grant. And so the numbers that we have here in front of us right now, and this is as of today, we have 118 students identified. And with the students that are being identified, the EC, that's the Early Childhood Special Ed, we have one student there, and this is district-wide right now, the numbers that we have. Kindergarten, we have three that are identified, and 11, first, second grade 10, and so on. And we're continuously looking at the numbers, trying to make sure, once again, that we have all students identified. And there's a purpose for that as we continue looking at this, and that's giving the students an opportunity to have affinity space. So once we know that they've been identified, that space has been created at each site, which we'll kind of talk a little bit more as we look at the different goals that have to be implemented as part of the plan. So with our American Indian education plan, what we've done is, there are five goals, and in those goals, it's kind of broken down, and it's connected to the world's best workforce expectations. And with that, we're always looking at that racial economic achievement gap, making sure that the students are getting what they need, also looking at the college and career net readiness. And that means that having conversations with all members involved, including from kindergarten, early childhood, all the way to high school, and having conversations with administrators. And with the grant, I was able to receive extra support through that, and Shanita has been really helpful and instrumental in meeting with those different members at the sites to not only talk about the students at the sites, but also work with the families to make sure that they understand the pieces that are involved in our American Indian With this, we have our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, and Shanita is the chairperson with some other family members that are part of that. This is our first year where we're able to really kind of hit the ground running with some of this. And through this process, SLP has been intentional about receiving information from our identified families, because once again, it's been a moving target. I know Shanita has been really diligent about contacting families once we have the name of students in a building, and just inviting them to come to meetings. And then some will say, well, no, yes, and so it's been one of those challenges of, yes, I'm American Indian, and I would love to come to your meeting, or I'm not sure how you got my name on the list, but we'll keep working on that. And that goes back to that identification process that's taken place. So with this committee, that's sort of like an advisory for us. In the past, we've had an American and Indian group that would share, or families, they would share information and just talk about what is it that they felt was missing, not only at the sites, but at the district level. And then we would take that information, meaning myself, and I would share that with building principals, and now Shanita is able to help me with that. And we would just talk about what is it that we need to make sure is being implemented, not only at the sites, but making sure that the families are getting what they need as well. And so we're giving them an opportunity to have meetings, to talk about issues, and then they would share that information with Shanita, and we'll kind of talk about what is it we can provide in order for that to occur. So one of the goals is the all-American Indian children are ready for school. And that's making sure that we're being culturally relevant in the readiness program, and that's starting, once again, from early childhood, and having conversations with families. And I know one of the things that Shanita has done was met with some of the families, and I know I'm going to give her an opportunity to share some of the things too, she's waiting patiently, just kind of talk about some of the things that have taken place with the families, and then cultural activities for them to take part in as well. So I don't know if you want to share some of the things that, when you had your meetings, some of the things that took place with the families here.
Okay. Meeting with the families was, it was in a very personal atmosphere, like in their home or in the community, and asking them what they wanted to see implemented, and a lot of things, which I was quite surprised was, well, I'm not surprised, okay, but anyway, but they wanted more curriculum that was, that had native implement, that we could implement more native culture and studies into our schools. They wanted to see that in the schools. And activities to do stuff with each other, because they don't feel that there's many. So if there's, they only might see only like one or two in the community, or even some schools, families didn't see, think that there were any other native students in the district at all. So this has helped them to come out and participate a little bit more. Still, a little bit, a lot of, a lot of work needs to be done, but we're getting there.
So that's dealing with our goal one. Goal two is all American Indian third graders are achieving grade level literacy. And what we have to do here, and you'll see where it says MCA proficiency, we're having to keep track of who are those students, what did they receive on MCA, and then create a goal for those students. And I worked with Prachi Merkachy on how to, once again, create the goal, what was the percentage or proficiency for our American Indian students. And then what we've also done is created a literacy kit that each elementary building receive, and in those kits, there are resources for buildings to use as they work on their planners, or as they're writing curriculum or teaching a lesson. And this is, once again, to enhance that literature for our American Indian students so they can see and read about someone similar to themselves. Goal three is all achievement gaps are closed for American Indian students, and this is collaboration with our core content classroom teachers, multicultural liaison, and providing tutoring when necessary. So one of the things that Shanita does, she contacts the buildings, and then we look at, we kind of analyze which students we see are failing, or there's a possibility of failure, and we start to analyze what could be occurring. If it's not grades, could it be attendance? And if there's an attendance issue, having a conversation with the families just to say, what do you need from us? Is there some support that we can provide? So we just look for various avenues to support the families, and then also work with the other advocates that are in the building. For instance, the middle school, they have the advocate there, his name is Deontay, that she works with, and at the high school, Chris Weaver. And so it's just making sure that you're having connections, or she's having connections with various members in the building when we see students that are having some struggles or need extra support or tutoring. And then fourth goal is all American Indian students attain career and college readiness. And this is where I know, and you can share this information a little bit about what you've been doing with the families and college and career.
Okay. Just making sure that they know that they have an opportunity to go to college. Sometimes, if you're low income, it might not be a part of your plan to go to college. So just to offer them different information for financial aid and scholarship opportunities that are afforded to them because they're native, and just, just helping them to have a plan for later in life and beyond high school is very important. Sometimes, they weren't thinking about it, or they didn't know that there were scholarships or financial aid available, and it, when you see a young person who didn't think that they would ever be going to college because they couldn't pay for it, and kind of seeing the family dynamics, and this is a way out for them to have hope is amazing.
And on top of that, with our liaisons or advocates at school, when they're college tours, we make sure that when we look at the list, do we see our American Indian students in that, on that list, so that they're a part of those tours as well. And I know the, I have to say, Deontay and Chris Weaver, they've been really great about making sure that when it's time to go on a trip or college tour, they will give us a call to say, here's a list of students that we're taking, just to make sure that they are a part of that conversation and tour as well. And this is just more information that, once again, all Ameri, I'm sorry, all American Indian students attain college and career readiness. And one of the things that we were very fortunate to do this year was have a collaboration between the Community Education Department, and in order to, once again, the families were saying, how can we put the narrative out there about American Indians and our families? And so with that, the Native American Studies video course consisted with Elizabeth Rowan Keith, and she was a professor that was able to provide some very well-attended, I want to say videos, and kind of some information about how and what takes place in Native American history and what's happening now. And there was a winter course that they, that was offered, and then there were 10 total, and so we had a winter and spring. And I know Shanita, you had some information that you were able to talk with Ms. Keith about as far as the studies that were taking place, or you were able to attend some also.
I attended all of them except for one. And also, there's, there's students, so there were some high school students that attended some, and I actually got her to join the committee, so we'll be working with her as well. She's a member of the community in St. Louis Park, and so I got her to join on, so we should be having, oh, can you hear, did you hear me at all? Oh, okay. So we'll have some things coming up with her in leading some discussions and studies with her in the community. with her in the community.
So I think that's great that she'll be able to work more with us on how to support our families. And these are just some numbers of some of the titles that were presented and registrations that took place, and with the evaluations at the end, it's just a little bit more just showing us that not only are American Indian families interested in the information, but we have other members as well. Some of the courses or some of the videos, Trail of Tears, Lost Bird of Wounded Knee, Black Indians, Our Spirits Don't Speak English, and Incident at the Old Gala. And so these were, once again, well-received. We saw a lot of great compliments about the videos, and we're working toward trying to make sure that, or see if we can have something like this again next year. And this is, once again, making sure that we're monitoring our American Indian model, not only looking at grades, but we're looking at behavior, attendance, and then the credits that the students should have in order to graduate. And so this is having Shanita working with the students and the families and getting that input. So part of the parent committee resolution is that we're, once we have the meetings, is just getting the parents to let us know if there's something else that we need to do in St. Louis Park in order to meet the needs of the families, our American Indian families, or if they feel that, okay, no, we don't agree with what's taking place, we do not concur with what's going on. And part of that is, do you concur or not? And in the meeting, these are some things that have taken place with Shanita and some of the students at various sites. And I don't know if you wanted to share a little bit about that?
Sure. At two of the elementary schools, I have a morning meditation and affirmation, and they come right in, in the morning, right off the bus, and they get their breakfast, and they come, and we have the morning meditation. So they bring their breakfast with them, excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous. So they bring their, their breakfast with them, and then they have mindfulness activities that are like culturally relevant. So we have like mandalas, I read to them, making dream catchers, just something that they can focus on and get prepared to start their day, like in a peaceful way. And so that's the third through fifth graders, and that's once a week. So at Aquila, it's Monday mornings, and at Peter Hobart, it's Tuesday mornings.
So one of the other components that we tried to do is to make sure that there's a celebration after each event. I know last year, we were able to have families get together and do what we call a celebration at the end, and that's just to, once again, connect with each other, have that affinity space to know, oh, you attend this school, I didn't know your child was a part of the Jibway tribe, oh, a part of the tribe. And so it's just really beautiful to see the connections that are being made at the different meetings, and the ah-hahs that are taking place, and the students saying, oh, I didn't know that, and they walk by each other each day. And so being able to celebrate that is something that I think is, for me, is a really highlight to see each and every time we have the meetings. And this is something that we're able to provide more this year, and I think Shanita kind of talked about this a little bit, with part of the meditation. Now we're adding the affinity space where students, once we figure out, okay, who, how many students at the site, they're given opportunities to get together in a room and just talk. What does it feel like to be American Indian in this space? What do you need? What resources are available? And some of that did you know takes place. There's also some family engagement support that is being prevented throughout the community. And we were able to have the resolution with the vote of concurrence on February 28th. So parents are supportive of what's taking place, and hopefully we will continue, once again, writing the grant with the funding and the support that is needed for our students. So that's the end. If you have questions?
So I have a question about the numbers and how you presented them, see if I have this, if I understand this right. So the numbers that we see in front of us are a result of what has traditionally been identified as the main ethnicity, but also some of the people who have done it have designated multiple. But it sounds like you believe there are potentially more that would not be in here. Is that what I was reading from what you said, or?
Okay. So I'm going to let Prachi answer because she was able to help me pull the information, so she'll be able to give a better explanation.
So, Joe, in the past, students or parents were able to pick only one race or ethnicity out of five choices. So if someone had American Indian, or Pacific Islander, or Native American heritage, they could, if they picked, and they had another one, and they picked the other one, we wouldn't know. So now, under, under the federal category, because they can pick multiple, so we can identify more clearly, more specifically, if anyone has Native American heritage. Does that answer your question?
So that, that's what's in the numbers that were presented us. When we see 118 students, that reflects this designation of multiple, up to five.
Yes. It does represent now, right now, the current enrollment form is confusing because there's the state categories, the five categories, and you can pick only one, and then right away, you're asked about the federal categories where you can pick multiple. And I have looked just casually, and sometimes it seems discrepant between the two categories, but we're just using the federal categories for now, and picking any one who has picked that, check either of those two, the Pacific Islander or Native American.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First, with respect to our elementary students, those numbers, are they, are they concentrated in any particular schools, or do we see that they're basically equivalent across our schools?
As far as the elementary sites?
Right.
I want to say some of the numbers that we saw, the high was Peter Hobart, Susan Langrent, and, and Aquila. They're kind of almost pretty similar. Right, right.
Okay, the other question that I have is, so Shanita, from everything that you are, your relationships that you're building with the families, and what you're learning about their experiences at our schools, I know that Frida is kind of the bridge here, but is that information being shared with our equity coaches? Are there conversations that might be happening about what we're learning from our families and how we can be using that with PD, with our teachers, and furthering those conversations for in the classroom?
Yes, and I think that those relationships will get better.
And I can answer with the part about the, the equity coaches. When we receive the, let's say, books or materials, one of the things that I had mentioned earlier, they have like a kit. So all of the instructional specialists, meaning the instructional TOSAs at the sites, they are aware of the kits with the information as far as the curriculum is concerned. And so the equity coaches and the instructional TOSAs, they are familiar with the resources that are available to make sure that that's being implemented, or to give teachers support in how to implement that in the classroom, if that's the question that you're asking.
I think so. I just want to make sure that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing in these areas and vice versa.
Oh, yes, I'm, I, yes, and we also meet anyway without, yeah, so I, I do meet with the equity coaches. We are supportive of each other, so maybe I didn't understand the question.
No, no, you spoke to it too, but that's great. That's, I, I'm really grateful that that's, that's all happened.
Okay, I want to start with what Mary had asked, and that was the distribution of our students through the schools. And, and you mentioned that in the morning meditation, that's just done at Peter Hobart?
Yes. Originally, I, I just only know how to be real, so I apologize. This is, it's, I have a part-time position, and my, originally, when I thought of doing the morning meditation and affirmation, I wanted to do it at all of the schools. And like, I figured out a time, and, you know, like, I'll go to this school on this day, there's six schools in five days a week. And I was like, I can go to these two schools on this day, and I can go to these two schools on this day. And it, it was just travel time and everything like that. And this is, this is a brand-new position, and I, I would rather be consistent with, with, with what I can do than to, like, just do a whole bunch and then not be able to be consistent with it. So I chose two schools, and the, building trust and being able to, like, follow through with a plan that I have with the morning meditation and affirmation is, is like so important and detrimental. So these two schools, for one, I chose Aquila because the principal there is awesome and very, very supportive. And I had some conversations with him at, at different meetings and stuff, and so that relationship was there, and I knew that he was supportive and genuine about that. And then my son went to Peter Hobart, so it's like kind of my homeschool. So that's why I chose those two schools to start with.
Makes sense. Great, thank you. And then the other question was, I, I don't know if these are just comments or praise or what I'm going to do here, but I'll, I'll, I'll go through it and see what happens. So the, the, the goal three were achievement gaps, where typically we're looking at achievement gaps of the MCAs and things like that. I like that you're doing it at the classroom level in that we're more of looking at the core curriculum that they're looking at instead of just the test. Because not a lot of people take standardized tests real well, I know my kids don't, but you're hitting the very important part, so great kudos to there. And then the IDP, it was nice that you said that one, Individual Development Plan, so you're looking at their MCAs, and then you're developing individual plans for each of the kids so that they can mature in their own way and then have those goals. So I like what you guys are doing with that, too. There's a question about goal one with the ECFE, and that is, do we have, I see that we only have one child in early learning. Do we have any methods or any ways that we can reach other kids that are not participating in the CFE? Because we know they're out there, but reach for them?
Sure. So like I said, this, this is a new position, and I've been doing a lot of training, and I do have contact with the parents, like, in an intimate setting. So I do know that there are children that will be coming into the school system, and to be able to, like, build that relationship and say, hey, you know, they can go here, and, you know, they're, well, I won't be in that building anymore, but, you know, just that I can go and check on them, and, you know, I can bring, like, toys. And this is like part of the grant where we can, like, have funding to bring to the home so that they can be ready to go, be prepared for the testing. If they never see these things, it's not going to be easy for them to, so, and through the training, I'm getting this, this input and, and being like, oh, I can do this, I can do this, I can, I can do this myself, and, you know, so.
I can appreciate that. And that's great, thank you, I appreciate that, too. And the last question, I think I'll ask, is the one on college and career readiness. So there's a lot of activity going on with that and with Kara Mueller and, and groups. And I was just wondering, does, do they, college readiness, do they have a individual, or can we get them to do a group meeting for your groups to do that one college career readiness, making sure your parents are ready for that college next step? I went to it this year, and it was a lot of great information on, on FASA, on which colleges and how to apply to colleges, and how many you should do, and all those other, just basic, really great information that we'd just like to see if we can get that information to all groups so that they're well-equipped for that next step. I know it wasn't really a good question, it was, it was more of, can we work with Kara to get her to come to your meeting with you guys and just do this presentation with her guy that she brings so that you'll have great information?
I can say I appreciate the information that you're providing, and one of the things we do try to do is make sure that as we're looking at students, how many are in 12th, 11th, and 10th grade, having the conversations with the members at the high school and middle school, just to make sure that they're getting what's necessary in order to move forward, and then informing the parents. So when the high school, they're sending out their information about what's taking place. For instance, the college night, and when they're having applications and scholarships and so forth, just making sure that parents are aware of it. And then, once again, what is it that we can do to support you as you move forward? So those are some pieces that we try to make sure that, or do you know, what do you need, and what else can we do for you, in a sense, to make sure that they're getting the information needed in order to make sure that, what's best for their family, in a sense?
So I'll be quick because Ken told me we're going to make up some time here.
Twelve minutes.
Yeah. The thing that I'm hoping comes forward as we talk about our curriculum and culturally relevant pedagogy is that we get to the point where it's not an extra we have to think about, especially with IV planners. To me, it just would seem so automatic, well, why is this perspective not automatically part of it? Because we want kids to see themselves in the materials. But then another step would be, would, I'm not sure how many different tribal nations are represented in this, but I, I wonder if our core values that we talk about as a school district align with the cultural values of the different tribes? And to see if we're overlapping well, or if we need to consider what we might need to adjust in order to better align. And the reason I'm saying this, I was at the National School Board Association meeting this, this weekend, and one of the sessions I went to was the school administrator from the state of Alaska, how it's an integral part of their statewide social, emotional learning has been embedded with their Native American cultural values. And it's not across the entire state yet, but they're, they're doing quite a lot of, they got an I-3 grant to, to analyze how they're incorporating that. And it just made me think, as I was hearing both of you present, that, to me, seems like an opportunity to really understand what are the Native community cultural values that, do they, do they align, or are we at odds with some of them? And that would be a discussion point.
I don't know. Great information. That, that's something that we can take back and ask with, when we're meeting with the families, just to share more about what do they feel is missing in an alignment and the culture component with that. And I'm not sure if that's something that has been brought up with Shanita or not, but we can take that in consideration as we continue to move forward.
I'm, I, I know we're identifying 118 students right now, and Prachi, thank you for adding that, because And Pratchu, thank you for adding that because that's new this year, right? To be able to multiple identify. But do we know how many different tribal peoples we have at this point?
No, and there's also families that are coming from different states. And so it's not just only the tribes in Minnesota or the surrounding states, but we have families that are coming from like Oklahoma and California, so all over.
In my white assumption, I was assuming Minnesota tribes. So I apologize for that and I'm failing gracefully in public. So thank you for explaining it's not just Minnesota tribes, but we have Native people from all across this nation that...
In this district.
In this district. That's really cool. But we have a lot to learn. So thank you so much for this work. Really grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And the question that you asked is a great question as far as the values and what's important to them. And that's something that we can take back when we have a conversation with them. So, once again, thank you and for the question that was posed.
Yep, Anne?
I just wanted to blow up on that point really quick. Is that something I'm thinking about that's not really, it's not your job in your committee, but it's all of our job is to make sure that we're not just doing culturally relevant pedagogy to our Native American kids, but that our pedagogy is culturally relevant about our Native students when we're teaching all of our kids. So that would be just, that's a big picture question. It's all of our job. But kind of speaks to that point of us all needing that kind of education.
I said not in a past tense, like we don't exist anymore.
And that's what the students want.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next up on our agenda is policy development first readings. Policy 203.5, School Board Meeting Agenda. 203.6, Consent Agenda. 205, Open and Closed Meetings. 206, Public Participation in Meetings. 208, Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policies. 209.1, School Board Email. 210, Conflict of Interest. 214, Out-of-State Board Travel. 215, Board Compensation. And 225, Board Operational Goals. So we received these early. People had a chance to look them over. When we do the first reading process, the form or the version that you're looking at is the most recent public record one we have. So if there's something that needs to be updated from the legislature side or from MSBA side or just tweaks we need to make, this is the time to really having some, what I'm hoping, robust discussion about policy since we're a policy governing body. So, anybody got anything?
I'm not going to, you could decide for yourself if this is robust or not. Maybe a question for Cindy or just something to bring up. So in 205, the open and closed meetings, section nine goes into the reasons for closed meetings as permitted by law. So it goes through labor negotiations, preliminary charges, performance evaluations, a few other things. So, and then on the last part of it, it says, "Other meetings, other meetings shall be closed provided by law." So I just wanted to know or to make sure like that section aligns with the most current law? Or, I mean, is it just, since it's part of more of the procedure part of it, it's just giving examples and maybe not inclusive in that last item is a catch-all?
My understanding is it is because it's not all-inclusive. There are several types of meetings that would come before the board that maybe two members would say, this definitely should be closed. And, you know, four or five more say, no, it should be open. Those meetings, if they're not clarified and I don't have a copy of the statute or I don't have the actual guidance by our policy, those would be those other meetings that we would research with council how to proceed. Does that answer your question?
So basically, A through G, as listed there, are ones that were current with 2014. Okay, thank you.
I have a few things that I found if you would like me to share with those.
That'd be great, Cindy. Thank you.
Superintendent and I did our homework on these. On this same policy, 205, Board Book, page 32, six, the meeting agenda. The board, the policy of this board is, shall be to close the agenda at the regular board meetings by 10:00 a.m. of the Thursday preceding the board meeting. We have, we've kind of called it the Wednesday noon deadline. Thursday, 10:00, I'm okay with that because I absolutely will refuse anything after that unless it's up the direction of the chair or the superintendent. There are sometimes, there's circumstances that just can't happen. So I just wanted to point that out because there's a lot of, a lot of help by the current cabinet and at the support of the superintendent to make sure that those deadlines are met and the things are provided. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then the last meeting, the last sentence on that, where the agenda shall be delivered to the homes of the board members, that no longer happens.
Those are really good points. And a question I have for you, Cindy. When we moved from paper agendas and supporting documents that you delivered to our homes to the Board Book platform, that's a huge time saver that you're not driving all over town delivering paper. It's saving gas, it's saving trees. But am I correct that we need that noon Wednesday deadline? Because they don't just give you a piece of paper. You have to manipulate it to make it fit in the platform. Is that correct?
The format for Board Book is, it's not difficult, but it's a specific format. And so it has to come to me in a certain fashion. Ninety-nine percent of the time it does, it's that. Or 96%, it's persons waiting for someone else or they've been out or there's an addition or there's a change or a team met and they are pulling what they previously sent and changing it. So we are, there are a lot of districts that don't make additions or changes, but we don't operate that way. We try to stay as close we can to the schedule. So, but with Board Book, that was kind of my suggestion. If I can have everything by noon on Wednesday, then the formatting can be done. I can run a draft and I can edit. When I get them too late, then that cuts into my editing time, which you folks end up fine for me when you're reading it at a later time. So that's the rationale behind it. Does that help?
Yeah, and so I think we should possibly consider changing our language then from 10:00 a.m. Thursday to the noon on Wednesday so that it's not just practice, but it's actually documented that this is our deadline. Anyone else want to weigh in on that?
If you and the superintendent choose that that's the deadline, then that's the deadline.
Just throw out there that we can have a practice that it's noon on Wednesday, but by keeping it on here, it's 10:00 on Thursday, that does create some flexibility. Because if we say that the agenda is going to be closed by noon on Wednesday, then that's our policy and now we're violating our policy if something comes up on Thursday morning that you really feel you would like to be in the board packet.
And I will say that does come from personnel. Human Resources personnel sometimes will have an addition that might need action. So that would be, and it happens now. It actually happens sometimes even on Friday morning before I released it. So it's at the will of the board and the superintendent and the administrators that have that issue, how pertinent it is, how timely it is, whether it be added to the agenda or be brought to the meeting and you can formally add it in public. But it's always best to have everything done prior to the best we can.
And I just, to follow up on Cindy's point, too, about the agenda shall be delivered to the homes of the board members on the Friday evening preceding the meeting. I decided to interpret that liberally when I was reading it because it shows up in Board Book and that's in my possession, the iPad, then you have delivered it to my home, technically speaking.
Oh, I used to knock on the door.
Right. And but if, you know, there is some sort of internet-related apocalypse, but we're still going to meet on Monday, I'm assuming that there would be something in place that would allow us to print off on the photocopy machine and it would still be delivered to our homes.
Oh, in that case, I would be knocking on your door.
Yes, exactly. So I think perhaps we could delete the phrase "to the homes" and we could just say, "The agenda shall be delivered to the board members." And then even with respect to the Friday, I know that there are some things where there are glitches or something and that rarely, but it has happened that it's Saturday. And again, I just want to avoid the instances where we are setting ourselves up to potentially be violating our own policies. And so perhaps we want to say, simply say maybe 48 hours before the meeting or something, you know. So I, just create some flexibility in that language as well.
And just so the boards are aware, the agenda that we post, that deadline is met. That legal deadline is met by three days, by Friday. We post the cover sheet, if you would call it, with just the topics to both. And we don't have to even do that. We just, we give this a courtesy to the press. As long as it's on our website, that's legal posting. We have never stopped including the press because that's past practice and they look for it. So those deadlines are always met. Agenda topics are confirmed and those are always met. So delivering it to the board, policy language is policy language. But I just wanted to make sure that you folks know that the legal deadlines are being met, whether you get your packet on Friday or not.
And I'm sorry if I in any way implied that they weren't. No, I completely understand. We are doing everything we are supposed to do with respect to open meetings law, just some of the details of the packet inclusion we might not get until Saturday.
You can word it however you choose. You can, you know, say that the board receives their packet prior to the meeting?
I think that that's fine. I like that idea, just keeping it as open as possible.
To my knowledge, this is not statutory, but I'll check when we come back for a second reading.
So yeah, then for clarity's sake, I would propose that that last sentence be, "The agenda shall be delivered to the board members prior to the meeting."
Got it. And then I also have C under that same six-meeting agenda. The board will approve an annual board agenda calendar each year. This calendar will identify major topics which the board will address in the year ahead. That was done maybe the first two years that I came. We had, the board at that time worked that way. We've gotten away from that. Not saying that we can't go back to it, but currently we do not practice this.
That is actually something that Nancy Gores mentioned to me that she would like us to be a little more thoughtful about this. So I'm wondering if that's something where the superintendent, Nancy, and I can talk about what that annual board agenda would look like moving forward. But it would be a project in order to tee off officially in January when we have our organizing meeting. And that way we could have some additional input. Does that sound okay to people?
Yeah, Chair Waters, we are working on a draft of such calendar that I could share with the board even as soon as this Friday in the weekly communication, if you would like. Today at Cabinet, we are seeking input from Cabinet members. So by Friday, I could share with you the most recent draft, understanding that it's still a work in progress.
So that covers that. Excellent. Does anyone else have anything about 205, Cindy?
So for clarification on C, right now it's remaining as is?
Yeah, let's leave it as is. And we have it in the record of this meeting that it's a topic that we're working on and addressing.
Thank you. I have one other that I, actually the superintendent caught this one. This would be in policy 206, in Procedures, Board Book, page 39. So it'd be Procedures, which is Roman numeral six, letter A, number seven. Middle of the paragraph, it addresses identifying Assistant Superintendent. The district no longer has that title.
Thank you for catching that, Superintendent Ossai. Cindy, appreciate that. Yeah, we need to clean that up.
Those are the only changes that we were able to find and open to any edits from the board.
Does anyone else have anything on 206? All right, Jim?
Just a question. If someone had a complaint against someone, which they didn't think, they followed the chain of command and think was addressed by the superintendent, is it then okay for them to bring it to us in public here as a school board?
So people who have, we should explain for people what chain of command is. If there's a situation, we want to solve it at the lowest, earliest level. So student to teacher, parent to teacher, parent to principal, parent to superintendent, parent to board. In public, we are not allowed to violate student and personnel data privacy. And there are very strict rules about that. And so if we had someone who at Open Forum wanted to make a public complaint about a specific individual, I would gavel the meeting and take a recess. And we can't do that. It's a violation of personal privacy data. But we certainly have many, many avenues for people to communicate with the board, including our official email, which is one of our policies. The School Board Hotline, we all listen to that. Grocery store. You know, I never get out of the grocery store without at least one person talking to me. Events that we all go to. We also hold listening sessions. So there are lots of opportunities for people to find us and communicate with us. And that is a better place to do that, especially in the one-on-one aspect of it. But not to do vitriolic complaining on camera. That's just not part of good civic or civil engagement. And that is something we strive for. Anything else on any of the other policies? Cindy, yes?
I would just like to point out, I don't know that it's ever been spoken about, but in that policy that you were just referring to, the very last page is the Public Request for Information and Copies. That is something that was instituted under Director Bowers, that if there's a public data request, they come to the superintendent's office. We are able to charge if we so choose. But that is the process for anyone from the public that would like to have a copy of something that we have or want information. And we were bound to provide that if it's legal to provide that within a certain length of time that is reasonable. So I just wanted to make the board aware that this form is, it didn't used to exist and it's kind of hidden in here, but this is how a public request for information would happen.
There is a blank sort of area on that form in the second-to-last paragraph. The hourly rate isn't listed. I don't know if it needs to be, but...
I think that's open because of the salary schedule will change.
It comes down that you're actually trying to figure out the rate of pay of the person that's responsible for retrieving this information. It is legal to charge that. There are some limitations. But MSBA, we ran it through legal counsel when this form was. And because unless you want to change it every time something changes, it's okay to leave it like this. It's kind of what it is at the time.
Anything else that we want to talk about on these first readings that, anybody noticed? Okay, anything else that you want us to know about, Cindy?
No, that's it. Thank you.
So we are ready to move on to policy development. Second readings of Policies, 201, Legal Status of the Board. 202, School Board Officers. 203, Operations of the Board. 203.1, 203.1, board procedures, and 203.2, order of the meetings. So, this is our second reading. I think we did give some minor edits to Cindy last time, and forgive me because I, I lost, I lost track of what they might have been. Did, did anybody have anything?
Oh, yeah, Mary.
I just had those grammatical changes on 203.1, section two, C and D, and then there was one more, yeah, on M. They were just grammatical, though, not substantive.
They're all noted in red.
Perfect, excellent. Is there anything else on the second reading of these policies? Going once, going? Joel.
Oh, and thanks, Cindy, having you made some changes on 203.2. Hard to see because it's just punctuation, so thanks for.
There were several punctuation. I went through all of them, as long as I was, had the time, and you folks had them so early, so I thank you for all of your edits.
Great, thank you.
Jim.
I was just wondering, is there someplace where it notes that we've delegated some responsibilities to secretary and treasurer to other people, or it doesn't need to be in the policy if we do that, actually?
So, we do that in our organizing meeting in January. We have a statement about that, where some duties are assigned to the business director, even though we hold the titles of clerk and treasurer. Is there anything else we need to say about that?
Jim, are you referring to, like, I do the work of the clerk with the assistance of the clerk, whether we have that in writing somewhere?
I wonder if that is supposed to be in the, the policy, if you do that or not, or if just having a motion once a year is okay, I guess.
It does say, the, the school board by resolution may combine the duties of the offices of clerk and treasurer.
Oh, did miss that.
On 3B on 202.
Okay, good. It looks like we have that covered, then. Thanks, Ann, for pointing that out.
Good question.
All right, so, moving along, it is now time for communications and transmittals.
Get action agenda, Chair.
Oh, my apologies, thank you. I told you I was tired from the flight. Okay, action agenda, approval of policies, 201, legal status of the board, 202, school board officers, 203, operations of the board, 203.1, board procedures, and 203.2, order of the meeting. It is recommended that the school board approve the second reading of policies, 201, legal status of the board, 202, school board officers, 203, operations of the board, 203.1, board procedures, and 203.2, order of the meeting as presented. Is there a motion? So moved by Jim Benneke. Is there a second? Second by Ken Morrison, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Now, we're on to communications and transmittals, and does anybody have anything that we should share?
I'll go. I went to the All District Orchestra Festival last week, and we have officially, I think, outgrown our space. We need a giant, I don't know, the metronome or something, for our fourth through 12th grade orchestra students. I know it's gone, thanks, Ken. Because there are so many kids in orchestra, and so many parents, and family members, and community members, and teachers, and principals who want to see these kids perform, and it was amazing. And to connect it to one of our core values, which I promised to do, hopes and dreams inspire and motivate people to invest in themselves and their community. And I think there were an awful lot of fourth graders in particular who can only play five notes, D, E, F-sharp, G, and open A, and they can play three songs with those five notes, but they now have a hope and a dream that they can play as well as our amazing high school orchestra. And they got to see those kids play, and something that they can do in just a few years with, with hard work. So, I think that they're inspired and motivated to invest in themselves, in practicing, and getting to that point.
Anyone else? Joe.
Thursday, April 12th, is the Susan Lindgren Imagination and Adventures Fair at the middle school. I believe it runs from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Setup is from 6:00 to 7:00. This is the first year Tatalovich will be presenting at the fair, so I'm, I'm looking forward to this project that, that young one is creating in her room. I'm not totally sure what it is, but I'm sure it'll be great, and I've been to these fairs at, I think, all the schools over the years, and it's really cool to see what the, the kids come up with. Some kids do history, some kids do some crazy dreams, some kids do science, some kids do sports. It's all over the place, so it's really cool stuff. So, yeah, that's Thursday, April 12th, evening at the middle school.
Aye.
I think it's different.
Joe was right, it's 7:00 to 8:00. Pizza, though, will be served as well, and that starts at 6:15. Yes, there's a magic trick being created by somebody at my house right now for this, so, yeah, fun for the whole family.
Very good. Coming up, the strategic plan core team is meeting on Wednesday, April 18th. It'll be an all-day session. There are about 30 of us. Ann Casey and I are on the core team. We have a number of community members, staff, teachers, Superintendent Ossai. So, we'll be evaluating our progress from year three of our strategic plan, and then be sharing out a report of that when we conclude that day-long of work. Anything you want to add to that, Ann? And I do want to mention that tomorrow night is April 10th, and beginning at 5:30, the school board will be mini, be meeting with the city council in city council chambers. It is our annual joint meeting, and we have an agenda posted for that. We want to build our relationship and capacity, and, and update both elected bodies on what is going on with our respective responsibilities. So, that is tomorrow night, starting at 5:30. And then, just one more reminder that on April 16th and April 18th, we are having public meetings for feedback on our facilities design process, and on the school district website, there is also an online feedback capacity for that information if you're not able to attend either of the public meetings. So, with that, if, are any other communications or transmittals? Mary has one.
I do, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. As some of you may know, in the last few years, we have started in, I should say we, that's wrong, there has been an Ultimate Frisbee team that has started at the middle school by a couple of our members of our community, Jim Schope and Catherine Crowley, and it is for fifth through eighth graders. And my sons have played on it, and they've had a great time, but this is my official request and call-out for more girls to join this team. Minnesota Ultimate League requires there be two girls on the field at all times of five players from each team, and we need more of our young women to come out and enjoy this really great sport. The teamwork and the spirit around the sport is truly so great, and my boys are not athletes at all, at all. No offense to my sons, but they have a great time playing this, and it is so friendly and such a great, great sport. So, please, any fifth, at any school, fifth grade through eighth graders, please, there's still time to come out. Practice starts tomorrow with your sweats, and your gloves, and your hats, and everything. It's field behind the middle school.
So, hearing no other communications and transmittals, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ann Casey, is there a second? Second by Mary Tombeck, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries 6-0. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.